...meeting of the Willet's City Council order for June 24th. Can we all rise and join in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes.
Warren King.
Uh, here.
Here.
The missing are Madrigal and Strong.
Uh, before we jump into public communications, we have an honored guest here this evening. Sergeant McNally would like, we would like to introduce the new member of the force here.
Absolutely. Jake. I think we, he had his debut day at the Flosser Lane School where we kinda rewarded the kids that helped us name him. He had a little bit of a naming contest and they helped us come up with his name and this is Officer Lutz who will be out on the streets, actually, he's been out on the streets.
Yeah, he's already served a couple of days.
And so you'll see him tomorrow at the hometown celebration walking around, so I would urge the public just to follow Sergeant McNally's instructions when they come up to the dog, just so that, because he is trained in master protection also, so. And he's also gonna be good at finding drugs too, so. But I'll let Sergeant McNally tell you a little bit about him.
Great.
Well, thank you, counsel. This, and actually, I'm very grateful of this counsel. I started my career March 30 years ago as an Army soldier and became a dog handler for the US Army.
Oh, really?
So, through my whole police career, now 27 years, I always wanted to do it, but there were a myriad of other special duty assignments that I took on instead of canines. So when this position came open, I jumped all over it.
Cool.
It's been a great, exciting endeavor. It was five weeks of rigorous training up in Doris, California, and the trainer actually chose Lutz for us. I don't know what his original name was, he came from a kennel club in Europe, and through the city's expense, we brought him over from Europe, and then he and I bonded through five weeks of training up in Doris. So, a good time to go through Doris, if that's high desert and it wasn't too hot, so. He's a German shepherd, he's black, he's registered through the kennel club in Europe, so it's not the American Kennel Club, it's the whatever European version of it is. About two years old.
He's a foreign worker.
What's that?
He's a foreign worker, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, with immigration paperwork. I'm sure he slid through immigration quicker than anybody else ever has.
So, did you, did you, your, your training with canines in the service, did any of that come back to you?
It did, but it was 30 years ago, so it was a big refresher course, but I had forgotten more than that. Nay.
Do you want to explain?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jerry.
I just wanted to have, while we didn't buy local as far as the dog, the vet is local, Dr. Hannah and East Oak Vet Clinic will be our vet choice for, for him, so.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I, I thought I read a story about his name and what it means and how it came to be.
It was one of the little girls in the class, and she had Googled his name, and it meant, meant "strong fierce warrior" in German, which is his origin, so it kinda was very fitting. So, he's quite comical, he, he's got a good personality, and I think that that was one of the things that we wanted, was a specific personality temperament of a, of a dog that is, is based on community policing, so. And works very well with our program, we can take him into the schools, he's very docile, he's very young, he's just two years old. But he's got a lot of growth to do still.
Chief Gonzalez mentioned that when people see you on the street tomorrow with him, that they should follow your instructions about approach and everything, did you wanna discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, you just, if you hovered over him, it would just be like me rushing up to a council member and hugging them from the back. It's a very uncomfortable feeling from the dog. And you know how most people say, "Well, my dog doesn't bite." Well, my dog does bite. And, and he bites very well, but he's pretty well-trained in that, but again, he does bite, and that, that is a liability to the city of his, of what he's been trained to do, but he's also been trained not to do it, and it's just, it would put him in a position where he would feel threatened with somebody rushing up to the top of him or something like that.
So basically, your advice would be give him space, be polite and respectful to you and him?
Yes.
Is that?
And then just that, yeah, let him approach you versus vice versa, rushing up on him and stuff like that.
All right, thank you, Sergeant. Good afternoon. We'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
That's not my hair over there.
Okay, do we have any public communications? These are items that are not on the agenda, no, no action will be taken, but welcome to come up to the podium, Mr. McKee. Would you come up and introduce yourself, please?
John McKee. And before I give my little spiel out, but since the subject came up, I'll give you a quick dog joke. Why are blind people prohibited from skydiving? Frightens the dog. Okay.
Where is the dog when we need him?
Again, I was about here a year ago, I'd like to address the issue of the planter boxes up here at the corner of Commercial and Main Street. They still continue to impede the flow of traffic when someone wants to turn from eastbound Commercial to southbound 101, they have to wait for someone many times to turn from eastbound Commercial to northbound 101. I would like to see them removed forever after the 4th, but at this point, I'll settle for one year, because today in the Journal, they think they might complete the freeway by 16 rather than 17. And this caption here reads, "101 Snakes Through Willets." Well, this is a time to cut a few rattles off that snake. So, I've had quite a bit of time stolen out of my life the last 30 years through this Willets traffic, and this is a time maybe to stop that theft. So, this is the only thing I've ever asked for, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, John.
Mike Sweeney, Minnesota Solid Waste. I'd like to congratulate the council and the staff for the completion of the franchise contract. That was a great step forward. It has the potential of giving their citizens the opportunity to cut their trash costs, and in the overall sense, it will save a lot of money for the city and for your local economy. But in order to realize the potential of the major change that's brought in by this contract, the mixed organics program, the challenge now is the proper outreach and information to the public. Since it is a new program, it's a different way of handling trash in a big way. So happily, in your new franchise contract, you have very strong language which puts the, a large responsibility for outreach on the hauler, Solid Waste of Willets. Specifically, Solid Waste of Willets is gonna have to put a new all-weather sticker on all of the green carts, and the city has to approve those stickers before they go in. And also, the company has to mail an informational flyer in English and Spanish to all customers. And the city also needs to approve that in advance of it being issued. And even more important, within 60 to 120 days after the beginning of the program, they have to inspect each cart before it's picked up to determine if the customer is making use of the program or is abusing the program in any way, such as putting plastic in where it doesn't belong. So, I want you all to be aware of that, so I highlighted that language, and I have some copy set here for your future reference.
Thank you.
Now, in terms of the initial sticker, this is what Empire Waste Management did when they introduced their program in the county and in Fort Bragg two years ago. And it was a good start, but I think it's a fairly modest approach, and I hope that Willets can do better than this. Uh, this is a 77 square inches, and if you see from the language, Solid Waste of Willets is required to put a 100 square inch sticker on the carts. And I also hope that we will bend our minds and our creative talents to making it a more effective way to get people's attention, in graphics and possibly in the approach. Most of the stickers and literature that I've seen in other jurisdictions that have, that have started this program, kind of look like that, they just have a little picture of a bunch of small things that go into the carts, showing the, the variety of mixed organics. But there is some creativity out there. This came off of the City of San Pablo website, where they have a virtual vortex going into the green cart, showing all of the organics that can now go into it. And that's one approach that could be used, which I hope will be considered. See, I'm trying to stimulate some thought about this in advance of the, of the due date.
We've been thinking about it almost constantly since we've...
I know that, and I, I know that your role was crucial in getting the job done, so I really appreciate that, as I hope the citizens do also. And finally, the adoption of this franchise contract with this program puts Willets in a very strong position to satisfy the state's mandate, which is of January 1st, you have to have a, a program for complying with AB 1826. And that's just another piece of paper for the state. I have prepared a draft, which I communicated to your city manager, and also to CalRecycle in a preliminary way to see if this is what they want, and I hope that, that all goes smoothly, along with the rest of the program. Thank you.
Thank you for coming by and reminding us of those bad parts of it. We'll be after Jerry to see that that gets implemented properly. Thank you. So, we will hand out paper, and I can lose my agenda faster. There it is. So, we're gonna move on to other public communications? Anybody else?
Yes.
Could you, could you come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
I may not be coming up at the right time, but I don't wanna make sure I get up there.
If this has to do with the, the hearing on this, on the pool fees or anything to do with the pool that's coming up?
So, I should sit down?
About 10 seconds after you sit down. This is, I'm asking for any public comment on items which are not on the agenda. Okay, before, we're gonna move on now to the rate discussion of rates and charges at this, at the pool. But before we do that, I'd like to introduce our pool manager, Jake Stuberfield, to come up and give us a little report on what's happening at the pool. What you see is how things are coming.
All right. So, yeah, my name is Jake Stuberfield, and it's my second year being the manager of the pool. And it's been, it's been a little chaotic, so we've got a lot of new lifeguards, and there's been a lot of training that's gone on, and, you know, a little bit of wrenches in the gears here and there, but we're working through it. We've got a lot of veteran lifeguards, have been a huge help in that, and a lot of people have really stepped up to do whatever they can, including help here at the city, Adrian Moore helping out. So, everything's going really smoothly, and honestly, I'm really impressed with our new hire lifeguards and how they've done, and they've stepped in, and they've been coming in off the clock just to learn how to be further their instruction with swim instructors, they realized they were kinda falling behind on that, in that aspect, so they immediately wanted to, on their own, to get better. Really appreciate having that. It's been, it's kinda on and off as far as people coming in and being okay with how things are price-wise, and, you know, last year, I didn't really have any issue with that, but there are some people who come in and, you know, they wanna buy the passes, and then they're kinda taken aback, and you have to kinda talk, you know, usually by the time we're done talking, they're like, "Well, it's actually cheaper if you buy a 20 pass," versus just coming in, coming in, coming in, buying individually, and we can get them going on it. Swim lessons, we do really well there, as far as people don't really tend to question it. It's like, swim lessons, I need to get my kid to swim, absolutely, I would like to pay for that. You know, they don't have any questions about that at all, so that's, that's a great way to bring in money. I'd say that's the, the best way, the pool makes the most, you know, throughout every year, so we always try to book that up first. And so far, it's been really good, the whole way through, it's, they've been, we've got our first session completely filled, and we've already stacked up the next two sessions about halfway full.
And when do the sessions run? When do they start? How long do they go?
Our second session is gonna be starting on the 6th, and it will go till the 16th. And, gosh, I cannot remember the dates on the next, I'm sorry, I'd have to have my papers in front of me.
But tell me a little bit about, is it a daily?
Our, our swimming lessons, they go in two-week sessions, and there's eight days total, the lessons are recurring. So, it's Mondays to Thursdays for two weeks, and they're in half-hour blocks. So, if we do morning lessons in, from 10 to 12, and so you could like 10 to 10:30, 10:30 to 11, et cetera. And then we also have evening lessons from 4 to 6, and it's the same thing, half-hour sessions. And we also have lifeguards that are WSI certified, that's a water safety instructor, and they've got their certifications through Red Cross, and so they can set up private lessons as well, because we actually have so many people coming in for lessons that we run out of time slots, and, you know, for, if you have three kids with each instructor, you know, for a half hour, that's 10 minutes kid, if they're dividing the time out evenly to the best of their ability. And so you have to incorporate, you know, group lessons at, you know, with all three of your students, and then also be able to get your one-on-one time to fill out any needs that they need to be met individually with each child.
And, and what about lap swimming? What's the times for that?
So, in the mornings, we have 6 to 8, and
In the evening?
In the evenings, we have 4 to 6. What we do is we put in a few of the lane lines on the side, and since the kid's learning to swim, you probably, all you need is three feet of water to teach somebody to swim, and most of these kids are, you know, not even three feet tall, so, so there's plenty of room for everybody to come in and swim.
So, it's 4 to 6 in the eve, evening?
That's correct.
And 6 to 8 in the morning?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's good. Okay, there may be some other questions, you know, that we might look to you for some answers.
Excellent, yeah. If anyone has any questions now, happy to answer.
We'll, we'll take, we're gonna take public comments?
Water aerobics, yeah, we have a water aerobics instructor who came back from last year, and she's, I wanna say eight years of experience now, might not wanna quote me on that, but she's great, really high energy, she provides a really great class, and it's really upbeat, and that's Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from noon to 1. Anybody else have any questions on that? No? All right.
We may have a couple as this
No problem.
Which way the discussions go. So, Adrian, we're, we're, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. First, can you just summarize what staff is recommending on the rate adjustments?
Sure. So, it had been suggested, we had a couple of different suggestions from the council to either double the fees or add a dollar to each of the fees, and what we did is we checked with KOA, City of Ikayah and the City of Fort Bragg on their pool rates. The, the two cities have the most substantive information on, on the overall aquatics programs. And what we've done is we've proposed a fee increase that would bring up our rates to what City of Ikayah, both Fort Bragg and Ikayah have the $5 a day charge, but Fort Bragg has a membership structure, and so the City of Ikayah is more similar to us. Not all of the fees are as high as theirs, but we, we recommended adjustments to some of the fees that are summarized here. And so, this is staff's recommendation based on what we found locally in the county. It does not cover our costs, where the pool, or the city rather, is not looking to make money on the pool. We are simply trying to keep up as much as we can with increasing costs. We have a lot of needs of the pool, and, you know, from labor costs to maintenance costs, to equipment repairs, chemicals, so on and so forth, and we, you know, carry the liability insurance on the pool. So, it's important that we have it appropriately staffed with certified lifeguards to ensure everyone's safety, and I, you know, have heard some feedback in the community that maybe we could cut back on the number of lifeguards and have some volunteers. I think if we had a volunteer certified lifeguard, that would be a conversation worth having, but it's important from the city's perspective, and I would imagine from everyone's perspective, to have a safe environment, and that's the number one priority.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be surprised if we hear any arguments to that. So, did you try and make any projections of what this rate increase would do to the running deficit? It's kind of a, I mean, you would say
It's a guesstimate.
It's just all a guesstimate.
Right. Suzie will give you, respond to that in more detail.
Like you just said, it's kinda hard to decide, you know, if you raise the rates, are people, are you still gonna give as many?
Well, and what kinda weather there is and all the other things.
But if we continue to have the same as last year, we should expect to see between $25 and $3,000 more doing this increase, and also putting the water aerobics back in.
Is water aerobics back? Do we, do we expect water aerobics to? I mean, I understand he's offering that class, but...
We've, we've only had one class this far, and our second class for water aerobics will be tomorrow, week one, if you guys wanna turn up that out, come on in.
Yeah.
And it's, it was a pretty decent turnout, I think, over about 15.
Okay. And, you know, and if, if we do do this rate increase, it will take effect July 1st, so, but if someone wants to beat the heat, they could buy their passes now. So, anyway, I, I, again, I recognize the, the hands up out here, and we'll, we will get to that directly.
Okay.
Okay?
That one can you write?
So, before we, we take input from the community, does, any comments up here that anybody would like to, concerns or expectations they'd like to share?
Just one, on the, you did not propose any increase on the nonprofit group rate per, per child, and $2 seems very low, and I'm wondering if the nonprofits that are taking advantage of that might be able to afford a $1 increase on that.
I think Jake has some good information on that, if you wanna come back up to the podium, please.
Yeah, I was actually exactly, I raised my hand about, so me and the assistant manager were just thinking about different ways it might be best to increase rates if we were going to, and, you know, I understand with, as cost of living everywhere else around the pool goes up, obviously, we need to keep some kinda pace with that. We noticed that the swimming less, swimming lessons for like preschools in town that come have a 50% discount, and that's enormous, and so they, they really tend to flood in with the swim lessons, and sometimes like for mornings especially, our, our first hour will be completely taken up with five different instructors, so that's 15 in 15 kids coming, that's 30 different lessons at half cost. So, even if we just bump that up a small amount, instead of having it just be the same still, we can still, even if it was, so instead of $50 per child, if it was just, you know, instead of 25, if it was $35 per child, we would still be making a significant gain there for, for each kid that comes with the preschools. And they're still getting a, a really great deal.
Okay. You, does that, you understand that at this point?
That was on the swimming lessons.
That's correct. Instead, so instead of just the general fee, it's, it's $50 for the first child, if there's a second child registered with the same parent or the same school, then it goes down to 45, and the third and any following that goes down to 40. So, it's half off for that cost for any preschool that comes right now, so it's $20, then 25, and then 15 for any following that. So, that's a significant loss, you know, coming in for lessons, and normally, we would have a lot more money there if it was, and what we ends up happening is we end up booking lessons full, and we're trying to schedule around other people's schedules, and instead of being able to reschedule them, they're like, "Well, this is the only time slot that I can do," and so we just miss out completely, because they're already booked full at the schools that are getting such a better rate. So, I, I will say, I mean, I do not want the schools to not be able to come in, I, I think that's a really great way to get a mass amount of kids to learn how to swim in an appropriate age, so that they're still safe, but I do think there is a little, a little bit of leeway where we could maybe, you know, up the price there just a bit, even if it was $5 or $10.
Okay. Well, we'll take, we'll take comments, and when we get time to make a motion, you can incorporate this or change that.
I wonder if an alternative would be to designate certain time slots for the nonprofit preschool rate?
Yeah.
Rather than having them get to pick whenever?
Yeah, that would be great. I, I know any of the swim instructors would be more than open to that idea as well. Swim lessons is kinda, it's not even really work, so they, you know, it feels like it's a good time, the kids are all really happy and smiling, so you kinda just get caught up in it, and then a half hour's over like that, so it, nobody minds coming to work when it's just a good time, so. As far as maybe like more hours for them, it would definitely cover the cost, and then some to make it worth doing that, absolutely.
Thank you, Jake.
Yep.
No problem. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, this is gonna be more for Suzie, I think. Like everything else that we look at regarding the budget, this comes down to money. So, you, I heard you say that we, if, if these fees are implemented and the attendance stays the same as it has been, we can see an increase of, did you say $2,500 to $3,000 a year?
Yep.
And right now, as I recall, we're showing a deficit of about $45,000, I believe, for the pool. So, this wouldn't impact it all that much. So, I guess ultimately, what it comes down to is, you know, I mean, it comes down to the citizens who pay the fees, and it pays the taxes, and you get the services, and if it comes from one place, it goes to another place, or, you know, or, or if it goes to another place, it comes from someplace. So, I think that's the fundamental choice that has to be made.
I think somewhere in there, what you said made some sense.
I trust.
A little increase will offset the losses some.
A little bit.
And I, I don't think that there is the, I think that's, that's where we're going to arrive, probably somewhere in that neighborhood, I don't think we are expecting to offset $45,000 in this deal, so. Okay.
What was the deficit again?
The, the pool runs about a $45,000 deficit.
$5,000?
Yeah. So, that's money that we have to take out of the general fund that would do paved streets, pay cops, any of that, general services of this city. Wouldn't have anything to do with the water department or the wastewater department. So, anyway, it's not the only thing we do that doesn't make money, oh, by the way. So, I would like to open the public hearing, Jake, if you could take a seat, does anybody that would like to speak, I'd like them to come up and introduce themselves. So, just so everyone is clear, we're looking at a rate adjustment somewhere in the neighborhood of what's been discussed so far.
I wasn't nervous till I just got up here.
I know the feeling.
My name is Stephanie Rubin, and I'm a 35-year employee with North Coast Opportunities in Willets. I'm an administrator for the state and federal subsidized childcare program. So, not only do I have my hand on the pulse of subsidizing and subsidized, subsidized programs, I probably know more than anybody in this room what it's like to be a working parent and what their wages are, both their net and their gross, trying to make it in Willets and use our recreational activities. I've worked with our past city manager, I've worked with Deb Kuvins, our past school district person, I have worked wonderfully with Adrian Moore, who has truly put the word "service" back in public service. I came with a set things I wanted to stay, but the information that came out so far is making me bend what I have to say. Many groups use the pool. There's the otters, there's the otter pups, there was the Willets Aerobics Group, there are so many groups. There is the Willets Kids Club, a program that I subsidize into, there are all of the daycare centers. Most of them are nonprofit, but what does a nonprofit really mean? Nonprofit really means, basically, you are taking your extra income after paying salaries and paying wages and rolling it back into the business. And right now, I've just, changing my topic about, I care about the working parents who aren't able to even afford childcare through the Willets Kids Club. I care about the working parents who don't have the access to go to Imagination Station or all of the other wonderful preschools that you as the city are offering discounts to for the children that they're getting paid for to provide a business for, and giving them a discount in order to access the pool services while we're operating at a large deficit, and I care about the pool greatly. I don't want it to sound like I don't care about children, that's been my business for 35 years. But what I am gonna ask you is to look at what you're subsidizing. Think about the parents who don't have that option, and who have two or three kids and wanna come to the pool three days a week. You've gotta have equitable fees for all, and there shouldn't be a free pass or a discounted pass for parents who can't afford to get in the door with Willets Kids Club and all of the other childcare programs and are paying full cost out of their pocket. I wanna see it work for all. I am an advocate for this pool. I am a pool lover, as Adrian Moore knows. I think our pool is a gem in our community. Our pool serves the largest bandwidth and cross-section of Willets demographics of any asset in this community, except for our library. And our library isn't a city asset, it's a county asset.
Steph, I'm not going to cut you off.
Oh, that's okay.
But you're getting...
Okay.
The light turns red now.
Okay. So what I do want to say is, think about an equitable pool fee. We talked about numbers. I do want to present to you, when you're looking at numbers in this budget, that the city just lost sixteen hundred and twenty-three dollars a month from the Willets Aerobics Group who left the pool and went out on their own. I want you to factor that into your costs when you're looking about who you're subsidizing and who you're not subsidizing. So I will let you move me on. I have much more to say and to share, and I'd like to give solutions. Adrian Moore knows how to get ahold of me by all means, but we have to be equitable. We have to think about the parents who can't afford to get in the back door. And you need to understand that you just lost sixteen hundred and twenty-three dollars a month.
We know that.
Okay.
Anybody else like to weigh in on this? Yeah, come on.
Sure, yeah. Okay, I'll try to keep it short. I have a couple of points to make.
No, I should have explained. It's set up on a three-minute.
Yes. I will keep it three minutes or less.
And that's why I'd give you extra, but I should have. We do this every weekend, I know it, but I realize that everybody else doesn't.
Okay. I just want to thank everyone who's passionate about the pool and the community for coming. And I want to just address a few things. I was the previous pool manager for a few years. My name is Shawna Jevins, and I think increasing the fees by a dollar is a great idea. That brings it concurrent with Yucaya fees. I think possibly increasing the daycare fees is a good option, maybe speaking with the daycare providers. And I just want to address that heated topic really quick, that that program was created because, at the time when I was managing, we weren't filling all the slots for swim lessons. And people couldn't afford it. So we had swim instructors that were not working. We couldn't employ them because we only were half-full, a quarter-full. So instead of just let that opportunity pass by, I went out in the community and networked with the preschools to bring them in so that we could employ our guards and we could teach more kids to swim so they wouldn't drown. And it was a break-even program. So that's how that got implemented. It wasn't a specialty thing. It was a win-win situation because we didn't have enough people coming in for lessons. I think raising the fees a little bit on that would be fine as well. And I'm mostly here just because I heard the fees were going to increase to eight dollars. And I was like, oh, no, 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 no. Let's not do that. I think that the pool is a great community asset, like the library, like the parks. I've spoken with many other cities who, nobody breaks even on their pool. But I want to bring a couple of things to light. A few places have parks and recreation districts, which is just a beast to establish a district. It's a lot of work. So what the city of Windsor is doing now is doing a thing called a nonprofit alternative fund development department. And this department, Windsor recently did it, I think maybe Eureka Fortuna's looking into it, is to infuse and supplement cash flow into their parks and recreation budget instead of, for specific capital projects. So this nonprofit establishes and then can fundraise and get grants from the state of California because nobody's pool is running at a bonus. It's not a business. They always run like that. So...
Like MTA.
Yeah, yeah. And then one other... So I just wanted to bring up that. The Parks and Rec District, as a maybe possibility to make it, I guess my thoughts are, make it more accessible, not less accessible. Oh, no, no eight-dollar fees, but make, you know, make it so more people are coming. And, you know, the ways I thought overall, big ideas to do that is the Parks and Rec or just establishing a nonprofit alternative fund development. Or Sebastopol did a really unique thing with memberships, kind of like the Yocayo Pool in Yucaya where, I think I'm right at about three minutes. But the Yocayo Pool in Yucaya has, they sell annual memberships, and it is a private pool, not a public pool. And Sebastopol did something kind of in the middle where they do have memberships to supplement the pool. So Yocayo, for example, has ninety families at four hundred bucks a year, and they have access to the pool and they have a different liability setup. So maybe an infusion of some of those ideas I would help, I would hope would help our pool be more accessible to more people.
Good ideas. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Do we need to push anything?
No, no.
Okay.
It magically takes care of itself.
I'm Christine Felton. I'm a second-grade teacher at Willets Elementary Charter. And I've been going to the pool so far one day this summer, and it was awesome. I went to the aqua aerobics class that Gabby teaches. She's phenomenal. She has training in issues of health for older people who may have had hip replacements or other disabilities. And the mix today was, or yesterday was, you know, some people over sixty-five, I'd say, and then a few people in their forties and fifties. And it's really wonderful. So I just want to put the plug in for the pool. I'd really like to see more creative solutions in terms of the fee structures because I think that just raising the rate is, even just a dollar, is going to push some families who are already going to the pool, I think is going to push them to go less. And I haven't done an official survey, but talking to some of my teacher friends who are also parents, you know, if you have three kids and you go, if you go two adults and three kids and it's five dollars each, I'm coming out with twenty-five dollars for the day. If you were to do a fee structure, for example, where the two adults were five dollars each and you added each child for two dollars each so that the family was paying sixteen dollars, they might go two or three times during the week. Or they may go two or three times during the month as opposed to one time during the month or two times during the month. So I'd like to see you consider maybe, I don't know if there, I don't know much about the other pools in this county, but if anybody has a membership structure or a fee structure like that where you get some, you cut the rate in order to get more visits from people and maybe end up growing the total amount of money. I love the idea of a membership because I think Willets is one of those communities. We've only been here about four years, but everyone here is wonderful in terms of pulling together. And I think with a membership, you may end up getting some people who buy that membership for the pride of having the membership. They may not go to the pool as often, but there is money in this town and in this area that I think will find its way if it's something people can take pride in. And I saw the Willets Kids Club thermometer that's on the corner of Commercial and Main. You know, if we had a membership drive for the pool, how many people would chip in and say, hey, I'll buy, I'll put in a few hundred dollars for a membership? And maybe that will kind of be money in hand that can start going in toward operations. So I just bought a gym membership in March, haven't used it yet. So I'm pretty sure that there will be some people who buy those memberships and don't even take advantage of the life grades. But thank you all for all the hard work you're doing. And to everyone who loves the pool, I'm a new convert, but it did finally get me to exercise.
Thank you, Christina. Yeah.
And my kids learned to swim in that pool, and now I'm raising a grandchild, and she's learning to swim in that pool. And she swims in the Otters. And once in a while, I go to aerobics. And we want that pool to always be here in this town. And I'm not sure that we can put any value on the pool. If your child learns to swim and they don't drown in the ocean or in the Eel River, it's priceless. And if it costs forty-five thousand dollars out of the general fund to keep one child or one adult alive, that's well-taken. I have some ideas about other ways to make some money. I would love to see you not change the rates, but I also know that you have to pay employees and chemicals and all those things. So here's a few ideas. We looked into how Yucaya and Fort Bragg are supporting their pools. I know Fort Bragg had a little problem a few years ago, but they're back in operation. So certainly, a Parks and Rec District might be something we could do. Can we sell advertising around the pool like we have down at the ball fields down the street? Can we have a pool booster club? Other ways to donate money. I went on some city's website and you could donate money to the pool. It was like, hmm, that's a novel idea, pretty easy. Press the button, pay the money. Can you open an endowment? Can I, I don't know, the city entity can have things endowed, like a college or something, but there might be people that are staunch supporters. You've got staunch supporters right here in this room who would put some money aside for an endowment for the pool. There have to be other ways. We have a very diverse community. We have seniors on fixed income that want to go to aerobics. They want to be in their pool. They need to be in their pool for their health. They don't have money. We have families that don't have much money. We need to be able to have the pool open for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Anybody else? Yeah, I see a couple of hands in the back.
I'm going to be fast, so, all right. My name is Christina Armstrong, and I'm a small business owner in town. I own a gardening company. I sell soils and nutrients. And I have a daughter. I'm a single mother. I spend a lot of time at the pool during the summer as much as I can because of the low fee, and I'm very, very appreciative of that. I called my father briefly today because he used to live in this town, and he's a former council member from when I was young, back in Chicago. And he also was a CEO of the Senior Center here in Willets for a short time when he lived here.
So do we have to guess?
His suggestion, I'm sorry.
What was his name?
Oh, his name's John Armstrong.
Oh, okay.
So...
He was on the city council?
Back in Chicago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was here. I'm sorry.
Here in Willets, he was CEO of the Senior Center for a short time.
Okay.
So his rapid decision, conclusion of what we might want to consider was to ask the Senior Center. He said that there's a fund there with quite a bit of money, and they might be very interested in hearing the last speaker speak of how, you know, the seniors need the pool, our children need the pool, their grandchildren need the pool. Why would they not want to help, you know, donate? And this is my daughter Cassidy.
Hi, Cassidy.
And she's being very patient, so we're going to get out of your hair, and I thank you for your time.
Sure.
He also suggested maybe the Rotary Club, which I know nothing about and don't even know if it exists in Willets, but...
Yeah, we know a little bit about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'm Barbary Gonzalez, and I'm really happy to hear that you guys have, are looking into reasonable increases in the fees. I believe that a reasonable increase is warranted. I don't believe the pool fees have been increased in a while. I really liked the idea of listening to Jake, and he was saying how, you know, possibly, I think it was a great idea to pull the daycares in, but maybe a fifty percent discount first one lessons is a little extreme and maybe having the daycare kids pay a little bit more would be, you know, reasonable. My biggest thing is wanting to see the pool stay open. And the forty-five thousand dollars that it would cost the city out of the fund to keep the pool open, hopefully, they see that as a savings and children not defacing other places of the city, not doing, you know, not doing damage to other places in the city because they're spending time at the pool, they're able to spend time at the pool, instead of getting themselves in trouble. And so in the long run, that actually would be a huge savings to the city, you know. See, the forty-five thousand dollar investment would be huge. And I know that Bruce, that one of the concerns you boys had is the people from out of town, you know, using the facilities, and they don't pay any property taxes here. I did want to let you know that this last weekend, we had a swim meet, which I am no longer involved with the Otters, but I still volunteer my time. We had one hundred and sixty swimmers, thirty-four were from Willets, and one hundred and twenty-six swimmers were from out of town. Most of those people stayed in hotels here. They went to restaurants here. They went to the movies. They went to the museum. And I can tell you for a fact, they did go to the museum. So, you know, we have one hundred and twenty-six swimmers whose families spent money in this town last weekend. So by having the pool open, you know, it is bringing money to town as well as keeping our kids off the streets. And it's much, much cheaper than going to a movie.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think the pool is an asset which is, draws on all age classes and all types of people. And I think that that's really, in my view, what, you know, some other facilities we have target just one specific type of person or user that, you know, has... So tennis courts and swimming pools really fit the whole spectrum of people in the community. And, you know, we have a yearly conversation about the Park and Rec District aspect of it because the city, the city residents carry the brunt of that load and arguably have half of the users at most. So we still continue to pursue, I don't think we're, we haven't given up on that. There's, it's getting through LAFCO and going through a process. It's not a overnight experience, but we will continue to explore the Park and Rec District because we have so many facilities. We've got the Becta Grove Gym. We've got the Art Center. We've got the pool. We've got the tennis courts. We've got the skateboard park. We've got the ball fields and the soccer fields, and I'm sure I'm missing something. But, you know, that's a load for the local taxpayers to pay, obviously with help with the travelers and the other people that pay sales tax in town that don't stay in our, you know, don't live in our town. Anyway, didn't mean to digress. Anybody else like to speak? Sure, we've got a couple more people.
Hi, my name is Beth Rydel. I didn't exactly intend to speak on this, but I moved here from Forestville, which is an unincorporated town. And we now are ending up with two parks that are privately funded, but everybody can go there. And it's similar to what Ives Park and Sebastopol, which is partially city-owned and partially not. And I think knowing Willets, it would work well. And you do have memberships, but a lot of people join just to support something that is so important to the town. And I think that would definitely happen here. I'm not sure exactly...
I'm sure it would attract some...
How Ives set it up, but it really, because it is so cross-cultural and cross-generational. And, I mean, I hear about this pool all the time from all different kinds of people. So it's really important. And I, you do need to have a way of getting it paid for and not, not just for, I mean, I don't live in the city, so I don't pay anything for it other than to go. But, you know, people like me use it. So I think you could find a way of doing that.
Don't, you're not completely guilty. You know, part of our, part of our general fund money comes from sales tax revenue. And when you buy and pay sales tax in the community, you are supporting some city services. Yeah, in the back. Me?
I'm Lou Meyer. I'm the head coach of the Willets Otters. I'm speaking last and probably mostly to reiterate what everyone else has said. I came because I was frightened because some of the, we always hear the rumor the pool's going to close, and then we've heard the rumor the fees are going to be twice. And should have known you guys would be a little bit more reasonable than that. Anyway.
Wait, we get some, we get some company down here.
Yeah. Anyway, I was just, just reiterating, I was talking about their measurable effects of the pool. Children at the pool are not out on the street. How many lives have been saved because people have known how to swim? How many people have bought boats, kayaks, planned vacations around the water? How many students have worked at the pool to help with their college tuition? How many students have swum at higher levels and having, and having swim to help them get college degrees? I have twenty-some kids that have been on my team that have gone on to swim at universities and colleges, and I'm sure there are more that I couldn't think of. Otters, I've been part of the Otters since, not nineteen seventy-five, but maybe seventy-seven. We, every year, we've had at least fifty or more swimmers. Last week, they said we had a hundred and fifty-five swimmers in town. Town is gaining some benefit from that. And then we were thinking about... And then we were thinking about, the average wage in this town is about $27,000 per DM.
Thirty-two median.
Is it 32 now? So like a single mom is a good place to, you know, for the kids to go that's cheap and it keeps them off the street. It seems like much of our, many of our troubled kids come from poor families that have nowhere else to go. We were talking, as Otter parents, we were talking about things we could do to help and 501 grants we're thinking about because there's, there's going to be some major capital expenses that are going to have to take place. That pool soon.
Yeah.
Boiler is just about ready to blow and the bathrooms and things like that need to be fixed up. I was, someone said a thermometer on the road. Thermometer on the road seems to work in this town. This town is so generous with keeping things going, the, the, the club membership, that sort of thing certainly sounds good. We're actually going, our team's actually going to Ives Pool and Sebastopol on Friday to swim in a dual meet. So that's kind of ironic, isn't it, I guess? Anyway, thank you for your help and please, the pool is used. It's, I walk in there, as swimming lessons are done and you see people's faces and watching the little kids learn how to swim and watching the audiences in our swim meets and all the work that we do in teaching swimming, it's, it's very, very rewarding. Thank you.
Thanks Lou. Anybody else? I see a couple more hands. Lady over here.
Hi, my name is Suprina Rodriguez and I have a couple of questions and then some comments. One is I'd like to know in the last 10 years if the city has an amount built into their budget for the city pool and if so, how much money do you allocate? So for example, we're hearing that there's a $45,000 deficit for the pool, but how, when you passed your annual budget, did you already build in the $45,000 and had you done that in the prior?
Well, we do, you know, we do hold public workshops on our budget though. Thinking from memory, the pool costs us about $70,000 a year for our portion of it. You know, we only, we're only, only talking about a three-month period. And then the school district has it, you know, we own it, but we have agreements with the school district and they, they use it some in their period of time and then it's not used for a quarter of the year. So budget-wise, it, it represents about a $70,000 expense to the, to the city and with $25,000 worth of income from, from that. So it's a net loss of.
So I guess my question is, is, is the deficit spending increasing over the past few years and that, is that the reason for the need for?
It's hovering. It's, it's getting, you know, we're not getting any better.
Okay, so it's basically status quo, but we need to fix it.
Well, we have, our, our whole budget this year is, I think ironically out of balance in the red, about $48,000. So the city, the city's general fund is like 4.1 million dollars and through all of our expen, and that's exclusive of water and sewer that would have their own revenue sources. Anyway, I don't want to get too far off topic.
Okay.
But, but, you know, of that 4.1 million dollars in expenditures, the pool is $70,000 of that.
Okay. And then my second part is just a comment and that's that I do own a preschool daycare center here in town and we do have a specific time slot that we guarantee that we'll bring children to. Our's time slot is from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. I bring approximately 20 students on average to each session. Those students do receive a 50% discount and I provide the extra staff as well as the organization of collecting the money and giving a nice spreadsheet to the pool. So I cut down on a lot of their managerial time that's necessary. I think that those students who sign up for that session would be willing to pay more and would still sign up for it if you went up to say 35 and maybe that means that you lower the rate for the purpose of equality. You, you find somewhere in the middle for, for the other group. But if you go up to 50, I can tell you that we would probably drop the program because I don't believe we would have enough students that would attend the session during the school hours. Parents would just either not do it at all or they would do it in the evening. It's hard to say. I just want to throw that out there. And as well as we serve 15 students that are K through 3 and we take them to the pool every afternoon, Tuesdays and Thursdays and we don't charge parents anything for that. The school absorbs that. And I know there's many other programs that absorb the cost. And so when you start raising the rates, those costs that we're absorbing can become too much and we'll either use the pool less or we won't use the pool at all and that would be a shame. So I would just ask that any rates that you consider you do it moderately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another hand up back here, behind you.
So my name's Jamie and I'm the vice president of the Otters. And I think that, you know, coming and talking about a dollar, whatever, you know, I mean a dollar's a dollar, but the big things that are going to make a difference is, I'm guessing that the heating unit at the pool is a dinosaur, right? So if the community wants to come together, we can come together and we can do some fundraising things and maybe we can help out by putting a dent in the amount that it would cost to replace that and probably get something much more efficient that more than likely is going to cut down a big portion of the cost down there. Having a membership program, so the membership's for four months. I mean, if there's some way that we could all come together and somehow make it a year-round pool so that you could have things all year round, lap swim, swim lessons, all these things. But if we're all can make it down here to talk about a dollar, we should all be able to come together too, to maybe raise some of this money and help, you know what I mean? You can't, we can't just all come to complain. We have to come to figure out a way to fix it. And me on the Otters, I'm definitely, my group, we're trying to figure out some ways to fix it. And hopefully everyone will come together and try to find some things that can benefit it and change it in a way where it's going to take time and it's going to take effort. We can't just all come down and say, well, you can't raise it a dollar. We also, you know, there's business involved. It's not just about, you know what I mean? Everybody, everything's not always fair. So we have to come out and find a way to make it work for everyone involved and it's going to take work. And so everyone has to put that work in, in more ways than just it being unfair to raise the rates. We also got to figure out ways to fix it and then the rates can stay, maybe they can go down. But we have to figure out and change some things at the pool and update some things so things can maybe run a little smoother, cheaper. There's two sides to every coin, you know? So that's my input and I think that if we all come together, we can all probably make things happen, but it's, it's that too.
Yeah, I, thank you Jamie. We're hearing some good ideas here tonight.
Yeah.
I think, you know, I think of whether they're going to, to, how we, how we implement them, but, but I've heard some new ideas and some good ideas so far. In the back.
I'll be real brief.
No, no, microphones are addicting.
Well, I came here to support.
Could you introduce yourself?
My name's Angela Stone, also known as Jody. I came here to support, so I figure I should speak up and support. And I sincerely have compassion with all the concerns and all the facts and I live my life in the red, so I understand how money is always the factor. So with everything else being said, I won't say all, all that again. And I would say that I'm 61 years old. I raised my granddaughter. I don't want her in front of the video media devices. I want her out being active. It's hard for me and I know other grandparents to sit on the cement and there's no shade and the bleachers are also a little hard to spend several hours on. We don't have lockers and children just spew their things all over the place. So when you're talking about increasing and comparing it with other places, I think accommodations might be a good thing to, to look at and ditto to everything else being said.
Thank you, Jody. So anybody else, second, third and last call? Seeing none, then we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back up here and I'd be looking for a recommendation. Larry?
I would first of all like to say that I appreciate everybody that came out to give this their ideas. It's a little more difficult from where I'm sitting to say that, you know, it's easy to cut the rates or whatever because what I have to do is I have to spread the money the best way that I can over the whole city. And I've, I've been in public education the majority of my life and, and there's probably not anything that's more important to me than the children of this town. And they're adults that are 65 years old now, but at my particular time, they were, they were, yes Bruce. But anyhow, these are things that we need really to do and it's hard. It's really difficult for us to do this and there has been some very good things happen or said tonight and I think that we ought to take into consideration. But I also think that we ought to raise the rates in the proposed fees and just see how it goes to select, to everybody know that we need, we really need this help. And then if the help comes and we can lower the fees, then that would be wonderful. But we really need to get started and make it serious. And another thing, and it's been brought up several times, is that the people in the city of Willets are the ones that finance this whole thing. I mean, it's not the people in Brooktrails or Pine Mountain or wherever they live, but the people in the city of Willets actually from their property tax support this. And we don't discriminate. When you come to the pool, you just say, you know, here's my $3 or $5 or whatever you're going to pay and that's it. And it's a real bargain. It's a real bargain for everybody. And so I'll just leave it at that. I would make a, a recommendation that, that we accept the fees, the city fees for charging effective July 1st, 19, July 2015.
The staff recommendation?
Did you second that?
Did, did you?
No, I didn't. I had some.
Did you want to address the preschool fees?
Are you asking Larry?
No, I'm asking you because you brought it up before.
Yeah, I, I had some suggestions for some variations and also questions. So I, I could second it and then suggest an amendment to it and see if Larry wants to amend or not, but can we discuss it for a while before we have a motion on it?
Well, let's not try and get too complicated about it because I'm not too smart to know.
That's why I just assume, discuss it first before we.
Well, we have a motion. First of all, we either need either a motion or the second and discussion and I'll, I will second the motion and then we can have a discussion, but I'm happy to second the motion. So what did you want to talk about?
Well, I have a couple of questions maybe the pool manager can address too. One of them is on the open swims, are children 12 and under, do they need to be accompanied by an adult or are children being dropped off?
Excellent question. So if there's any question upon arrival, while we're doing the gave birth about liability waivers for both the adults.
Jake, you want to, you want to come back up to the microphone? We can hear it fine in here, but on the television you're being broadcast live, just almost three minutes.
Excellent question. So if, upon arrival, we have liability waivers that we have to have filled out for both children and adults that come to the facility. If they're dropping off, before they're allowed to just drop the child off, we have them pass a swimming test. So they have to do an entire pool length lap there and back across and they have to do so without any trouble or assistance from anybody. So they have no, no life jackets, no flotation device, we need to kind, and they have to get there on their own safely there and back. And because there's no circumstance, you know, to where they'll have to swim farther than that to get to an edge to take a break and with the lifeguards on duty, depending on how many people are in the pool at the time, you know, there's no time that they won't be noticed if they are starting to struggle, if they're that strong of a swimmer.
So, so children 12 and under are allowed unaccompanied by an adult if they've passed that test?
If they've passed their swim test. So it does, it does vary child to child. We've had four-year-olds that is, not a problem at all, little fish in the water. And we've had, you know, 13-year-olds that really struggle sometimes or, you know, 12-year-olds or 11-year-olds. So it's, it's very dependent case to case. Is there any other questions yet?
Why don't you just take a seat right there.
Somewhere closer.
Yeah.
Well, I was also a little bit confused about the nonprofit rate doesn't seem to show up other than in the open swim, but obviously there is a, an arrangement for nonprofits for group lessons and is, you know, on this rate chart of the existing rates, I don't quite know where that is.
Third line down of under open swim.
But that's open swim.
Right.
That's different than the.
So again, for, for swimming lessons, our rate is $50 for the first child. If there are two children being brought in, it is first $50 for the first child, $45 for the second. And any child following that, if they're signed up under the same name and same, same ticket, then it'll be $40. So it drops $5 for the first three and then it remains 40 from there on out on the same ticket. Usually there isn't more than, you know, four brought in at one unless there's a school for the schools and it is, you know, it's usually for each parent. So if there's siblings and they come in and they pay that way, you know, 50 and 45 or something like that.
That's for the two-week swimming lesson.
Yes, for the two-week swimming lessons. But again, schools have the 50% off discount. So instead of $50 for the first child, it's 25. So, and, and I, I completely agree with what was said earlier as far as if we were to raise the rates to be equal, then I don't, I don't think that would work out very well at all. But maybe like a small, a small increase, you know, even instead of 25, maybe 30 or even 35. But I, I would personally recommend no higher than that. I think that we'd see negative results rather than positive.
So that's not showing up on here? There's, there's a, something that's not on our rate schedule. It's school groups.
Well, it is on the current, the existing rates, but it was not part of what staff formulated as a recommendation for the expenses.
Okay. Well, so what I was hoping to propose were some minor adjustments to, to the staff recommendation. And I'll put them out there and maybe if Larry and the secondary groups are in agreement with some of them or any of them, all of them. I, one of the things was if you have a family showing up for open swim, I'm very sympathetic to the concern that if you have both parents and three kids or two kids, it adds up a lot. If you're going from $4 per person to $5 and you have a family that pays five, that's a lot of extra money. So I was thinking.
Shouldn't have so many kids.
Anyway, I was thinking that, that it could be $5 per adult and then, and then stay with the $4 for children if they are accompanied by at least one adult. Something like that. So the fam, you know, that, that was one thought. And also to encourage, you know, the children to have a place to swim that's affordable for, for children. So I, I think adults can pay $5, you know, they can just not have an extra cup of coffee or something. They can manage that, but, but a whole family, it starts to add up. That was one thought. The nonprofit group rate, it seemed to me that that should, that's the third item under open swim, could be $3 instead of 2, especially since the regular rate's going to be 5. So it seems like that's not unreasonable.
Still very fair.
And then down under facility rentals for pool parties, I was just going to suggest for when we need three lifeguards for more than 41 kids or, you know, people in a party to make it 120. And for if we need four lifeguards to make it 140, if you're throwing that big of a party, that's not a huge extra expense and you can't just pay the lifeguard only $10 and, you know, you have overhead and all that.
Absolutely.
So it seemed like that was reasonable. And then I think increasing the nonprofit rate for swimming lessons to $30 per, per child for the two-week session and if there's a second child, just a $5 bump on those instead of half those. That's my suggestions and I would like to propose that as an amendment, but if any of that's acceptable, then keep it simple.
Well, I, I don't think we want to get involved in, in testing whether the family of four, that they're, that they're actually biological family. Just seems to me to get a little bit beyond. So personally, I, I'd written down here, under the open swim, the nonprofit group rate would go to $3, which is exactly what you're asking for. go to $3, which is exactly what you're asking for. And then the only other change I'd suggest we make is under the swim lessons, and I had the same numbers written down, from 25 to 30, make it 30, and from 20 to 25, and just, and, and just leave it at that. Yeah, the, I don't know that this other, there are that many events, I mean the...
Yeah. To be honest, I think those are the, the ones that we'll get the most results from in making a change to. I, I will say, what I see as far as the, the majority of the public comes in, $4 is already kind of a cap. You know, I know it seems silly that an extra dollar would make a difference, but there's, there's a lot of kids that come in that have just been getting dropped off for the last few years. And, you know, I've worked at the pool since I was 16 years old in high school. So it's, it's been the same wave of kids and they, they've come, you know, as they're grown up, grown up, there, some of them are taller than I am now. And still, it's just, it's a cheap place for them to come, and they know they're safe there, they know that they're, they're going to be able to make friends there, and their parents don't have to worry about them. So it's, it's a safe environment for them to come. And I've really watched some of them make a lot of, a lot of changes in their lives as far as how they are. I've seen some kids who start off as being like, you know, really troublesome, and then, you know, we set, we sit them aside and we tell them, you know, hey, look, you know, you're getting older now, other kids are looking up to you, you got to be a role model rather than somebody's going to come here and be a negative, you know, come here, have fun, you can be a leader instead. And I've really noticed a lot of people take advantage of that, a lot of children take advantage of that and step up into a leadership role rather than going a different route. So I would really like to see as many people like that continue to come to the pool and continue to have that positive experience rather than not get that life lesson, you know, just in being out on their own because they can't afford to come anymore.
Maker of the motion, what do you think?
I'm still happy with the way it is. I would like to say one thing to the audience, is that when we started and it was advertised in the paper, the budget for the city, that's the time to come to us and say, we're from the Otters or we're from our whole family swims. This was two months ago. And at that particular time, there was some saying that, you know, that we would have to close the pool. Well, we don't want to shut the pool, but we know that we have to charge a little more for it. And you, there isn't anything that is the same price today as it was yesterday or last year, to my knowledge. I mean, I don't go to those places, I'll tell you that, because it seems like every time I go, it's another three bucks or five bucks or wherever. So I'm, I'm satisfied with leaving it the way it is. Thank you.
Way it is on the staff recommendation?
On the staff recommendations, please.
Okay. So, Ron?
Yeah, I, I see this as fundamentally a simple question, that it's, it's really not about the money. Because as was pointed out, if we go with the staff recommendation, we're only going to possibly reduce the budget deficit by $2,500, $3,000. And, you know, that's not going to make a dent in anything. It's, it's more symbolic than anything else. I think the real question that needs to be asked, because this applies to the pool as well as all the other services that the city provides to the public, either at a loss or at, you know, no cost, like the parks and the skate park and all this other stuff, these are all costing the city money. It's costing you money. So fundamentally, what we're talking about is philosophically, is the city, I don't want to say required, obligated we'll say, maybe it's the same thing, to provide these services, take a hit, you know, not, not charge enough money to cover the expenses, you know, take that hit every year, whatever it amounts to, pass the hit on to, you know, the rate, the citizens, who in turn will probably lose some services somewhere. And, you know, I don't know what that might be. It might be streets not getting paved, it might be grass not being mowed, it might be another police officer that's not being hired or whatever. However it works out, there's always going to be a price to pay for giving up a certain amount of revenue. So I think that's the fundamental question that needs to be asked. You know, do we want to try to, you know, the city council has to fight douchery responsibility to protect and watch the money, the public money, that this is a public trust that we have. And the way we do that is try for a balanced budget as much as possible. When we don't get a balanced budget, as I said, it comes from somewhere else.
So...
So I guess what I'm saying is, the real question is, are we willing as a community to pay a little extra?
Well, you, you just have to answer that for yourself. I mean, you have a chance to vote on it. Yeah.
Well, since Larry doesn't want to accept it as a friendly amendment, I would like to move an amendment to the motion that's on the table to increase the nonprofit group rate to $3 per child and to increase the swimming lesson nonprofit rate by approximately $5 for the two-week swimming lesson.
Well, ordinarily, I think I'd probably second that, but I'd, I'd like to take the vote on Larry's proposal and then if somebody else wants to second it, it can jump to the front of the line. I don't, I don't like that policy of motions and seconds myself, so. So I'd like to have a roll call vote on Larry's, Larry's proposal is a rate increase exactly as staff outlined on, on our, on our agenda summary in this page right here, right? Is that correct, Larry? Okay. So let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Strancey?
Yes.
Strong?
No.
Weinstein?
Yeah.
Mayor Burton?
No. So 2-2 fails, I believe. Now make your motion.
I move that we adopt the proposed fee schedule changes as proposed by staff with the addition of changing the nonprofit group rate for open swim to $3 per child and the non-profit...
That's all the people, that's all the four, $4 people?
No.
No, that's the $2 people to $3.
It's just this $2 one there.
Okay, to change that to 3.
Yes.
Yeah. And now I lost my piece of paper. And then change the swimming lessons for nonprofits' rates to $30 for the two-week sessions for the first child, and then I guess half of what the regular rate is for the other second and third child.
So that's $30 instead of 25?
Maybe not half, half of 25.
Right.
Is that, is that what I wanted to do?
Yes.
Is it slightly more than that? 30, 25?
Adding $5 to each of those things. And that's the preschool rate?
And the 20 to 25.
Yes.
That's correct.
And then the facility rentals?
Well, I would prefer to do that, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of interest in it, so I'll keep it simpler.
Okay. I'll second that. Do we have any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Strancey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Weinstein?
No.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Okay, so that's the new pool rates. Go get your swim passes now before the first of the month.
Before July 1st.
You raise the rates the 1st of July, 6:00 AM.
Yes, sir. Thank you much.
Okay. And thank you, and those are some good ideas, you know, as we continue to work on our services and our budget and our ideas for integrating the pool and making it a more, more revenue neutral, those are some good ideas. You just be quiet down there.
Now it's going to get real tight.
Take care of this. Give it just a second.
Can you call me? Yeah, come down to the store if you want, when you're in town.
Okay, now we start spending real money.
Yeah.
Discussion on possible action to adopt the proposed fiscal budget for 2015, 16. Adrian, what, what do you know?
Well, let's see. We brought this to you at the last council meeting. It had gone through the full council budget workshop process. And so reflecting the changes from the last workshop, the June 10th council meeting, as well as the special council meeting on June 12th regarding the reorganization, the new projected deficit is $48,745 with an overall general fund balance of $2,382,126. And then in the sewer fund, sewer fund balance is $1,0779,798. And that reflects the personnel changes, the Mill Creek meter that I think was not previously reflected.
The Mill Creek meter was originally budgeted at $75,000 and then it was decided, or maybe I missed, or it should have only been $25,000, so we reduced that.
So what, what you're showing here, Suzie, is that the Mill Creek meter expenditure was reduced by $50,000?
Exactly. Right.
And then, can you speak to the vehicle leases, those changes?
Sure. The leases that we talked about at the last meeting, we kept the lease in the parks, but we removed the leases from the sewer and the water enterprises and just put those in as purchases. Since there was money there, it didn't seem, didn't really make sense to pay interest.
A lot of money on pay interest.
Yeah.
While you're getting interest at 20 basis points and pay five or six.
And then, with the changes that just took place with the pool fees, there would be some further adjustment to the budget.
Well, and there is going to be further adjustment to the budget because we're still in negotiation on labor contracts and it's, so there's still impact to the budget.
So our staff recommendation is to adopt the budget as it's presented tonight, to have an adopted budget by July 1st. And then we would bring back a budget amendment at the time that negotiations have concluded. We don't yet have an estimated timeframe for that. Sometimes it's been in July, sometimes in August. And I believe that in addition to the pool fees, there, there may be a couple of other budget amendments as well as things continue to develop.
Okay. Yes.
I will move approval of the budget as recommended by staff.
Second.
Any public comment on the budget? Seeing none. Any comments up here? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Strancey? Strong?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, I normally don't vote for an out-of-balance budget, but this one is awfully close, within the margin of error, I think. So I commend staff in getting us down to what I think is a number which we have a good chance of covering coming in.
If I could just make a comment about that. This year's budget process seemed surprisingly smooth, to the point that we were asking ourselves, what are we missing? I think the difference was, other than the numbers that you see before you, is it felt like a much more collaborative process with our different departments. And I really give Rod and Suzie credit and Jerry, and, I mean, all of the departments, but we really tackled this with a, kind of a different viewpoint and a very like-minded approach to, you know, if, do we need this? Can we do it more cost-effectively? And I just want to thank all staff for your efforts with that.
Yes, thank you. Let's move along, update on the emergency water project.
Well, I have some pretty good news. We are nearing completion of the replacement well.
Oh, really?
The lies replacement well. It was actually inspected and sealed, inspected and permitted on Monday. And preliminary pumping results are pretty, very positive. Won't give you any numbers yet until we do some actual drawdown tests, do the 24-hour drawdown tests. But this morning Andrea went out with Caltrans and Weeks and Hanford is the Caltrans contractor for their mitigation to locate some wells and we're going to, they're going to let us put some transducers in, adjacent wells, for when we do the drawdown tests so we can get an idea exactly how it's going to affect the other wells. And that'll help us move towards permitting that well as a full-time secondary source. But right now, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty significant well as far as volume goes. We're getting really close to finishing up the, the facility. Expect that, we're going to meet the July 31st deadline. We should see in the next couple of weeks, getting really close to being completed with all the plumbing and electrical, ready to hook up, hook up power. We may have to wait on PG&E on that, but we have a generator there to, to run it for startup. So things are really positive right now. You can see the light at the end of that top.
Good, very good. Yeah, Larry?
I just think that all the council ought to really go out and look at this. This is really a nice item. And the facilities that everybody has brought forward is, has done a marvelous job. And I just think it's a real step in the right direction. I want to thank you, Rod, for, for getting it going and staying with it. Thank you very much. And the rest of the crew that are working out there that, you know, have done so many things and, as I was informed, I was out there on Tuesday, that almost everybody in water and sewer and public works have, have entered in and worked together on these. And this is what it really takes to make these go.
Yeah, they've done a lot of really good work. And I came in in the middle, I just get to help, help, help finish. And a lot of credit has to go out to the, all the staff. I mean, I could name pretty much every single one of them, and they've contributed to this project. So I think it's a, it's a testament to the capabilities of the, the people that the city currently employs. And it's a very positive sign for, for the, for the future, some of the projects, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. What is the schedule, if you know it yet, of going through a SEQA review process to enable us or decide whether we want to have it, have it become a supplemental source ongoingly?
We don't have a specific schedule. We've kind of looked at that like in the next, next year or two, in a broad, broad perspective. We're, for right now, we just want to, we want to finish what we started. So we'll have that secondary source if we're, we're in a, we get, find ourselves in a, in a, in a critical situation where we need to supplement our water supply. But we don't have specific plans to contract anyone in this fiscal year to, to, this coming fiscal year to, to do the, to do the SEQA analysis.
Okay, well, maybe you should ask perhaps Jen, that's this question too. If we found ourselves in late fall with no rain and a situation like what we had last time, would we be able to declare an emergency and legally use this? And the other question is, if there were, the 3 million gallon tank needs to be repaired and we needed to use it temporarily while doing that, what would our legal situation be?
Well, there are emergency exemptions to SEQA. If we were in a dire situation and we did not have water to meet the city's needs, we would certainly look closely at those SEQA emergency exemptions and see if we, if that applied and if we did, so pursue it.
Well, that's the whole purpose of being there. I mean, if we're in a water emergency, we use our emergency water supply. That's, that's what we're going to do. That's why we built it.
Right, right. I thought, I thought that she was talking about a permanent...
No, she went, I don't think in that...
I misunderstood your question because that's...
That was the first question. The second question was...
If we found ourselves in an emergency, then there's no, yeah, okay.
Our notice of exemption from SEQA states that we would use that well for up to 25 days out of the year in the case of an emergency.
Okay, thank you. That's my question. That's my question.
I think, I had heard a rumor that chief had a, maybe a comment he wanted to make about fire season at this point.
I'll wait for the emergency session.
Oh, wait, okay. We should be there soon. Not, not a lot going on. Okay, Rod, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking to the consent calendar, we have the minutes of May 27th, June 12th, and June 19th. Do we look for?
We don't have June 10th?
No, there's, they were pulled.
Okay, ISO move.
Your second?
Sure, my second. I gave a few typographic errors to Kathy, so minor.
Thank you.
Any public comment on the consent calendar, which are just the minutes? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Haverstrachey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Warren Steen?
Yes.
Mayor Burton? Sorry.
Yes.
It's 'cause I was looking at her.
Right to appeal. Persons are dissatisfied with decision, city council may have a right to review that decision by court. The city's adopted 1094.6. The code of civil procedure, which generally limits to 90 days with decisions, city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. I think we're gonna jump right up to city manager reports.
Couple of things, let's see, let's go through my list here. Our daily bread contacted the city and talked with Kathy and the chief about temporarily serving bag lunch, bag meals out of the city park. They think that they actually have a new location lined up, but this was kind of a preempt, preemptive measure in case that didn't happen or happen as quickly. The arts center, oh, I think we'll get to the arts center one under ad hoc. Airport day is scheduled for September 13th at 10:00 AM. And this year's theme is heroes fly-in. Dan Ramsey, our airport manager, is, I think just today and yesterday, starting to get the word out about that, as things have been solidified. I'm not sure if I mentioned the EV charging station that we will be getting at some point in the next few months down at the parking lot of the Skunk, where am I? Depot. And that is under estate parks grant, and, but they needed to place one inland, one or two inland, and so Willets will be the recipient of one of those inland charging stations. And this is going to be one of the rapid chargers. And then I.
Excuse me, is that going to have a credit card adaptation to it or just?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's not free?
No.
Oh, that's, interesting, that's different, seems like we did, everybody, okay, thank you.
We also are going to be looking at what it would take to update the charging station we have here in the parking lot. Looks like it would be a fairly low-cost thing, but it's just, there are some updated modules for that at this point. And then I will be leaving tomorrow on my vacation for a while. And Jerry Gonzalez will, our chief, will be acting city manager in my absence. Cat, I'll have the email and voicemail set up with an outgoing message. Kathy will be kind of the primary point person here at city hall for any inquiries that can't wait until I return. And then the chief will check in daily and be available for whatever might come up. I don't think we have to deal with any freeze conditions this time around.
Yeah. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Let's move on to department recommendations, anything from the city clerk?
Not at this time.
Finance, you got what you needed tonight, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Legal?
I just would mention that our discussion on the REMCO and use issue will resume at our July 22 meeting. Because of Holly Magdalio's absence, we did not put that matter on today's agenda.
Okay. Then, public safety. Chief, chief, chief.
Chief, chief.
Book in chiefs here.
Good evening to the honorable board and to our citizens here and at home. So I was asked by staff to kind of give a city council kind of a review of the upcoming fire season. As everyone is aware of, we are in year four of the continuing drought. We're gonna be looking at decreasing water tables, early drying of the surface waters, the ponds, including the streams and stored reservoirs. Fire season's starting early for 2015. We're, most California fire departments right now, they're facing two times the starts compared to last year at this time. Last year was a phenomenal, compared to the average year. US Forest Service is predicting devastating wildland fires within the state of California for the 2015 fire season. Predicting services for our area for June and July indicate we're gonna be moving into what they call the very dry category with a moderate risk of very large fires in much of the county. Temperature's gonna be, continuing to be above normal, and there exists the possibility of thunderstorms in the southern edge of the county by this weekend. What we're looking at on the fire side, fuels are drying ahead compared to normal year. The large down and dead fuels are already at critical fuel moistures. Almost anything out there in the, the wildland environment will readily burn. Watching the grass dry out, the first and second crop of grass, thanks to the second rain. You know, you can see the, the browning of the grass. Green and growing fuels have decreased fuel moistures compared to previous years for this time of year. What that's telling us is that the green and growing will reach a point where they will readily burn also, providing additional fuel and fire behavior for us to deal with. Reports from firefighters dealing with recent fires within the county are reporting that the crews are experiencing fire conditions, burning conditions, that they normally don't see until late July, early August. We're just about six to eight weeks ahead of what our normal burn pattern is. Like to remind the community about the ready, set, go. It's a mnemonic that Cal Fire, US Forest Service has, you know, advised everyone that's in that wildland urban interface to be ready. You know, every one of us has to take personal responsibility for our safety of our house, our homes, ourselves and our family. You know, the fire department, law enforcement will do what we can to assist, but everyone has to be part of this. Asking that properties be, you know, clearly marked, addressed, clearly available, readily available, easily seen. Street addresses where they can be readily seen and, you know, visible. And a reminder, you know, when, with the mutual aid system within our area, the cover engines that may be responding to your emergency may not be from the area. They could be from Southern California or from, you know, the valley. They're not gonna have that, you know, familiarity with the area as we do. The creation, you know, we talked about defensible space, defensible space, the creation of it really does make good sense. Providing a buffer between your home and the wildland environment, you know, allows us to, a safe area to conduct operations. And for those property owners that are going to elect to stay behind to try to defend their homes, that buffer is really, really important for them if they're gonna survive the event. We recommend that all families create a go-bag with necessary items, including emergency supplies, medication, personal papers, phone numbers, you know, necessary documents, things that you can't easily replace. Keep the go-bag in a readily accessible area, safe, ready to go. Work with family members, plan escape routes. You need to establish a safe meeting place outside of the home environment, you know, someplace where you're gonna meet, maybe at the firehouse or the community center or some other location, just in case everyone gets separated. Creating a plan for pets and livestock, that needs to be done prior, you know, to evacuation notices and before the big fire comes. You know, what are you gonna do with your, your animals? Second part of that is the set, and that includes situational awareness. And that's something we, you know, we drum into all firefighters, awareness of the surroundings. For people that live in that wildland urban interface, they need to have a situational awareness. They need to, you know, track temperatures, have the scanners going, listen to the local radio, radio station. You know, be aware of changing conditions, smoke conditions, wind conditions, increase in temperatures, and be ready to act. You know, you've got that planned, you want to be able to put that plan into action. If you have cell phones, you don't have the hardwired landlines, make sure you register your cell phones on Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. They have a site there for information for emergencies, the reverse 911 through your cellphone. Doesn't cost any money. Set up a small account and you can actually elect on what emergencies that you want to be notified of.
Could you give us the phone number for people to notify?
Pardon?
Do you have the?
No, it's on the website. It's on the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office website. Just go out, it's right in the middle of the screen, and it's the emergency notification number. Third part of that is go, and it doesn't necessarily mean to leave your property, but at least go, put your plan into effect. You know, follow the plan, hopefully that you've, you've created a good plan that's gonna help keep you safe. And if you are ordered from your homes, please listen to the public safety officers, law enforcement and fire. You know, we're gonna do everything we can to keep our community safe. You know, and as a follow-up, you know, if all our residents work together, last year we, we did really, really good. But if all our residents work in cooperation with each other and with the fire departments, careful in their outdoor activities, you know, being proactive in the defensive actions that they take place around their homes, we're, hopefully we're gonna minimize our exposure for this 2015 fire season. As another reminder, Jerry probably will hit on this too, you know, especially with the Fourth of July coming up, all fireworks are illegal in Mendocino County. And use or possession of fireworks within the county will lead to a citation by law enforcement. Just doesn't make good sense. And for the city council, as we continue into another year of drought, water conservation should be in the mindset of our population to help ensure clean, healthy water for our families and provide adequate water for fire suppression. Our fire department continues to do what we can to conserve this resource, which is included cutting back on vehicle maintenance, limiting water for our training evolutions, and seeking additional water supplies other than potable water for fire suppression. And we urge the city council to use what means that is at their disposal to make sure our community has adequate water storage until our rainfall returns to normal, whenever that may be. And I'm, I'm glad to see that the water project is, is getting online, because hopefully we won't need it, but I'm glad it's there.
Thank you, Carl.
Right.
Carl, you lost a card.
No, that's not mine, it was up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad Carl touched on the fireworks. We've been getting those calls and I fear that as we get closer to the Fourth of July, we'll get that. So please, no fireworks. We just distributed the little cheat sheet on what sections to write, so we will be writing those tickets and they're expensive. Along the same lines, there's no smoking in the city parks. Again, things are kind of dry over there, you know, it's that time of year and I don't want any accidental fires even at that level. It's getting busier as we get closer to the Fourth of July, it's getting hotter, so we've been taxed with a lot of folks, public drinking, that sort of stuff. Again, no drinking in public. I will be having a chat with our bars and hoping they'll help us out on the Fourth of July. And also with the Fourth of July, we have had our volunteer folks with Frontier Days distributing notices on the no parking areas. We kind of do that to the residents ahead of time, so they don't actually go on vacation and leave their parked cars and we tow them. So we try to hit them before the event, so they can move their cars. And the paper does a great job of passing the word, just in case they didn't listen to their notice ahead of time, but that's important. The hometown celebration is tomorrow. Traffic tends to kind of go to even a slower crawl through town, so I kind of want to put the word out that, to watch for pedestrians crossing back and forth tomorrow. It's, it's always an issue. And we've had some pedestrian complaints. Rod and I are working on a project that I'm not ready to unveil at the moment regarding some pedestrian issues that we've been having, and we're working on some solutions. It's probably not a total solution, but it's something that we're working on together. And trying to think, I think that's all I have.
Thanks, chief.
There is one thing.
Okay.
I did get a notice today from OES that there is some high heat coming to us. And in that event, what we've done in the past is opened up city hall as kind of a cooling station. We don't normally open up warming stations like they do back east, because most people here can know how to stay warm and cut their firewood ahead of time, but not a lot of people have air conditioning here. So if we do end up in that situation, we'll look towards the paper and other media to at least help us put the word out during that high heat time, so.
Anything else under public works and engineering?
I have something under community development. We published the notice of the public hearing in Friday's Willetts News for July 22nd public hearing of an application we received for John's Place that would be in the new location. This is for the bar operation. And the applicant is proposing the old Sun Cycle building, and so that public hearing is scheduled for July 22nd.
What time is it?
That's regular city council meeting, so six thirty.
Council meeting, all right. Yeah, Rod?
I have a few more things. As everybody knows, Humboldt Street is starting up, still moving along. The contractor's actually going to hire local concrete workers, all but one will be a local, a local person that's gonna put, put the sidewalks in. So I think that's a good thing. You notice we have a plate over here where the leak was at this intersection of Commercial and Humboldt. The contractor started to uncover that, and then there was some uncertainty, so we went ahead and went in and exposed the leak and plugged the major leak, and we're gonna take that out of the contract and work on that ourselves. So at some point in the next few weeks, we'll be, we'll be in there and shutting the water off in this area to fix that. It just didn't make sense to pay a change order when, when, when we were able to get in there and figure out what was going on. So that said, we, we put that fix off for a few weeks because we're starting Della Avenue on Monday. We'll be out on Friday grinding the trench, and Monday we're gonna start the work. Everything seems to be falling into place on that and trying to get the hardest part out of the way, which is getting started. So Monday should be that day. The other, the other thing coming up is the final septic rate study from Bartle and Wells. We did not receive that yet, but it looks like there will be, they're recommending a significant increase in our, our septic rates from 12 cents to, 12 cents per gallon to eighteen and a half cents per gallon.
Eighteen?
Yeah, so that'll probably, that'll be something that will come later as an amendment or some, some sort. Sorry. But that's all I have. Are there any, any questions on?
Sounds good. Thank you.
One, one, one quick thing for Jerry and Rod. WIF will be out doing their traffic control for the parade, as they are every year, so we, I think I signed that contract today?
Yeah, WIF, yeah, so.
Let's move on to council and committee reports. MCOT?
Did not meet.
LAFCO, she's not here. MTA?
We will be meeting tomorrow and adopting the budget. Writership is down somewhat, but the budget is not bad because of a lot of outside funding.
Emsa?
Emsa, I actually did meet, and some of the things we talked about was the impact of marijuana on the Hasmobile. of marijuana on the hazmat field. And one of the issues they're dealing with are the abandoned grow lights and butane cans that, that have to be handled carefully, liquid fertilizer, other, and other hazardous material. That's all, a lot of stuff picked up on the side of the roads and it costs money to deal with that, so MSWA is going to be talking to the, the shops to sell the materials and see if they can set up a collection thing. And the other thing we talked about reluctantly at first is the general manager succession. There is none. And it's unknown how long the general manager is going to stay. And I was a little concerned that what happens if you give us, you know, six months' notice or whatever, and then we have to go out and start looking for replacements. So, we need a program so we're not starting from scratch. And since we meet every three months, I guess we'll be discussing that in September.
I have one other thing on MTA, so just wanted to let people know that we are adding another route, Willets, Ukiah, Santa Rosa, so there'll be two, two round trips a day and that, that will help people that want to go to Santa Rosa do something and then come back the same day. So, I don't know the times on that, but you can check MTA.
EDFC?
Met two weeks ago and don't think I have anything new to report.
League has gone, water, wastewater, I don't think anything there?
I can report on the league.
Well, league?
League.
Oh, good.
League of California Cities. The next event meeting is July 17th up in Trinidad and the major topic is going to be TOT.
Revide N?
Just transit occupancy.
Finance, ad hoc bypass, and Center for the Arts?
We do have, I think Kathy can give a brief update.
Center for the Arts at this time, they are working on getting quotes to repaint the building. They have, received a couple, but they're working on getting a few more, getting one revised. They're also working on getting their database up and running, so it doesn't take city staff to do that. And they're just keeping the doors open and I have to commend the ladies for that because they're doing a great job.
Good, that's good. Any other committee reports? Any council member reports, recommendations? Gooden Welfare? We have four items listed under closed session, we need to do all four of those, Jim?
Yes, we should.
We have a conference with legal counsel regarding the lawsuit between Keep the Code and the city of Willets. The item with the REMCO hydraulics, which I will not participate in, and then labor negotiations and the performance evaluation city management. So, any decisions made from those, we will report back out here shortly, in a short period of time. So, thank you for.